Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first monthly meeting in October for the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Welcome to the public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair does reserve the right to call upon any interested attendee to make comment or pose a question specific to the items that are on the agenda. There are copies of the agenda on the table as you enter the meeting room. Item number two is to approve minutes from the September 26 regular meeting, entertain Without objection. Very important meeting was held this week in the city of Stamford by the Applications Committee of the city's Harbor Management Commission pertaining to the request by Weeks Marine to install a mooring out in the waters adjacent to the town of Greenwich. This proposal would have resulted if approved by the Stamford Harbor Commission and more decisively and with authority by the state DEP would have resulted in a new mooring situated right outside the Greenwich waters in an area that has been longstanding for recreational boating as well as right within the geographic area of several shellfish beds. Our local officials represented through the Selectmen's Office, myself, the Harbor Commission, the Shellfish Commission, attended the meeting along with our state representative Steve Messkers, our state Senator Alex Berkstein, and a host of other civic groups to express grave concern that this will have not only on, not only on the aesthetics, that's in many ways secondary, but on the safety and notably the environmental ecology. We had a meeting yesterday of all the interested parties to formulate our position which would begin by requesting intervenor status, which is essentially putting ourselves in play to be notified of all the various meeting notices. While we were at that meeting, we received word that Weeks Marine has withdrawn their proposal and they're going to seek an alternate site within the Stamford breakwater. I think what this did do in many respects is a couple of things. One, it unified the representation of our town, and I say this now from a broader pulpit that you had people doing what the citizenry elected us to do, which is to work hand in hand irrespective of party in the interests of the town, as I like to say, putting Greenwich first. And it also mobilized the citizen group there, the Greenwich Point Conservancy, the Rocky Point. And I see Ms. Erickson, thank you, you were there as well, as one of those citizens very much vested in the outcome of this. But I think it also brought up another point which I'd like to champion, and that is, for people who don't know, right now, the town of Greenwich through its Shellfish Commission is entered into a partnership now for four years with the University of Connecticut. It's our flagship university, my alma mater, I'm very proud. And they're doing considerable amount of research in and around those waters pertaining to microplastics and so forth, but also using it to improve the area, not just for swimming, but for the shellfish. In fact, the shellfish themselves are acting as a natural remover of pollutants. And that in itself, you've probably read about the Billion Oyster Project on the Hudson, but that in itself, I think, is an amazing story. But this proposal would in fact impede that. And I think we've heard from people who are more attuned to boating in terms of what the tugs do when they go in and out and they stir up currents. So I share this with everyone because while we've had a short-term, I want to say victory because that's, I don't want to sound like we're pumping our chests, we're not, but there's, it's a finite resource, it's held in the public trust, and we have to really think about coexisting, but we can't sacrifice the environmental impact because once it's jeopardized, it's lost. So I just want to thank everybody, our state folks, the delegation, Steve, and worked hard on it, Alex, to our groups, Greenwich Point Conservancy, Rocky Point, the Shellfish Commission, our Harbor Group that we all, you know, we nominate these people. They really did a great job, and I just think it was a good day for Greenwich and everybody working together. On October 3, we kicked off Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We do this every year. We are very fortunate in Greenwich to be the home to the Breast Cancer Alliance. I will just say that my message to this group was that they are remarkable and that their impact is felt not only locally, but really nationally and internationally because of the funding that they raise and the research that they're able to do, which has resulted in progress in early identification and treatment for this insidious disease. I've been very pleased to be part of their advisory board. I don't know too many people that this particular type of cancer has not affected either directly or their families. So I think this month, you know, go the extra mile if you are out supporting businesses that are supporting them. And also, I believe the luncheon will be taking place, do you, I don't have the date, the 21st of October for the, for the-
On Monday.
A Monday, at the Hyatt, the 21st of October. On Thursday evening, was pleased to participate in a program put on by the Glenville Volunteer Fire Company in honor of former late Selectman Dave Tice. This year's recipients of the award were Peter and B. Crumbine, both recognized individually and as a couple for their abiding in deep love for the town and support for various endeavors, both governmental and civic. And just want to again thank them for what they've done. On Sunday, October 6, we were in the park. Sandy was there with me, and we walked the Walk for Domestic Violence Awareness. This was the inaugural walk put on by the YWCA to bring focus and awareness to the prevalence of domestic violence in our community. Sadly, it's the number one reported crime here in the town. Through the leadership of the YWCA and Mary Lee Kiernan, they are working to educate in our schools for which the town supports through funding, children as young as elementary school on the signs of this really plague. And so want to thank them, and from what I understand, having been a co-chair of this, it was very successful in terms of not only raising awareness, but funds to support their programs. On Monday, it is Columbus Day. I will be raising the flag here at 9:00 AM. I would welcome anyone, you don't have to be of Italian heritage or descent to come. I'm generally modest, but I'm going to say this year, I've been, I've been, I guess, blessed to be, being recognized by the St. Lawrence Society at the St. Lawrence Club. I've been to these dinners a number of times over a number of years, but I'm really pleased to attend and thankful for their recognition. It's a time to really not only reflect upon Italian-American contributions, which part of the day is focused on that, but really, to me, it really champions the immigrant story. And we're all immigrants, and we all came and we all sought the same thing. And that's really the message I have about celebrating this as we do St. Patrick's Day and all these other ethnic groups that are here who have assimilated. So if you have the inclination, Monday morning at 9 for the flag raising, and I believe their program is at 6:30 at the St. Lawrence Club. One other note, I'd want to just point out, and it relates to something that I read in the newspaper today, and I've been somewhat removed from bringing this up previously when it's been written about, but you know, after three, three different comments over time by people, I have to put this into the public record. And that is, there's been assertions over the last several years about the town and its administration and the audit function of the town. And there's been comments made about suppressing audits, not releasing audits, and so forth. I could speak most specifically to the Parking Services Department because as we know, there's been several audits, both internal and external. Back in 2007, October, there was a considerable amount of back and forth about this, and comments were made that this administration had suppressed release of audits. First off, one has to know, organizationally, the BET has control of the audit function, not the Selectmen's Office. Two, they hire both internal auditors and external auditors. In that particular case, I believe both were engaged. But what I think is important to note is, the state's attorney at the time, Richard Colangelo, had written to the town attorney, Fox, the following. "It has come to my attention that there was an internal audit done in the Gordon case that I am prosecuting. It is concerning to me on many levels that this was done without notice to me or any thought given to the criminal case." I have pending. "Please remove the audit from the town website. Please do not disclose the audit. Please send the audit to the police so it can be made part of the investigation in my criminal prosecution. Lastly, please stop the audit committee from doing this in the future when there has been a criminal complaint made. They can put the prosecution at risk. Any questions? Please call me." Richard Colangelo. I say that because it's been said numerous times by several people in the context of politics, and these are the facts. So I'm happy to share this document with the pub. And finally, I will say that there's, there's been a lot of other issues surrounding that. I'm not here to talk about that today, but I am here to say that if there's any doubt that the audit function has become political in this town, one only needs to look at a document that was disclosed, actually to an opinion writer by the name of Robert Horton, seemed to have a lot of this information, that's titled "Town of Greenwich Internal Audit: Totally True Tale Written for the Not-Very-Industrious-and-or-Bright Follow-Up Audit Report to Another Audit Report Written Before This Report." And I swear I'm not making any of this up. July 11, 2019. Management response is March 27, 2019. June 7, 2019. Follow-up to report issued June 8, 2017. This came to light recently through issues that finance and HR had to deal with, but it confirmed what I had thought all along, that there had been a breach in the impartiality of the function. Now, I'm going away, I served on the BET 10 years, served here 12 years, but it's a very sad day when we have an important function like this trivialized. People's lives were impacted by it, and this document to me is illustration of what went wrong, so.
Peter, may I comment?
Yes.
I kind of, you referred to 2007, and I think you meant 2017.
Seventeen, yeah.
And since that was my campaign, to which I think you're referring, let me be clear as to what I said and what I didn't say. I did not talk about suppression of any report. What I talked about at the time, and I believe was and is valid, is I could not imagine a situation in which there was an internal audit over several years, and none of the steps required to remedy the deficiencies had been taken. There were, as I recall, 17 different deficiencies, and after four to six years, three had been addressed. The bulk had not. I made the point that as a corporate executive, I could not conceive of the fact that recommendations for an audit had not been implemented. So my criticism was not of a question of suppressing anything or not suppressing anything because I had seen the report, it was in the public domain. My criticism was of, over the failure to act. That, in my judgment, was and is today a valid act, and I still don't know that all those things have been addressed. And I said at the time, running for first selectman against you, and you won, I didn't, I said at the time that that would not be tolerated by me. It was not tolerated at Disney. I can't imagine that existing. That was my criticism. It was not a matter of the state attorney or anybody else. Since that time, there have been, as you say, other criticisms. I have not been party to those criticisms as of this day.
Thank you. Those other criticisms I'm alluding to don't refer to this, although if we're going to start talking about that just for a moment, because I did present this to you at the last meeting, it seems that we're in political season, two of us are not running, but nonetheless, when you hold a position, you're a target. So it was said from this dais by what I, what I thought used to be a very respectable member of our town government, a former Board of Ed Chair, a former RTM member, that they want to look into the issue of the draft agreement related to Greenwich Plaza because perhaps there was quote-unquote "some self-dealing" or something of that nature. Wouldn't you know, it was followed up by a letter by the name, by the guy by the name of Snyder, which I brought to your attention, essentially accusing me of the same thing. And it's been repeated. Now, I know people want to win elections, but if you want to win elections by impugning the integrity of someone who's given 32 years of service to the town, who has an impeccable record, worked in finance, then you're going to get pushed back. I've been quiet to date, and I brought this to your attention because you and I were at the same meeting, and I made the point that when your integrity was questioned by a very anonymous, dirty tactic saying that you were for the Northwest Fire Station in the sale of the Fairview property because it would benefit you and your wife, I was outraged, outraged, because I know that not to be true. It was actually despicable, and I said so. All I'm asking for is the same level of courtesy and respect, and not, I'm not specifically picking on you, but you're the leader of the party, so to speak. But that's where we are in the world of Greenwich politics today, and frankly, Washington has come to Greenwich, and it's not a very good day for our town if this is how it's going to go forward. And I, and I say that as we embark on another important discussion. People have got to stop casting aspersions, particularly if they don't have their facts right. And two, let's pull the scab off the wound. Mr. Horton, who writes an opinion piece, is a registered Democrat who lives in Fairfield. There's no question he has personal animus to me, almost an infatuation, little scary because any column he writes, somehow, my name winds up at the bottom. And it just speaks to who's driving this. And so, yes, it's the people involved, but it's our press. It's our press who don't get to the bottom of things with documented facts when they were given them. And this was actually given to Mr. Milano about this issue when it was written before. I said, "Here's the fact, I don't have control over that function, and we take our direction from other authorities." So hopefully, we could move forward. I happen to like Sandy, I've said that publicly, he's a, we get along fine, but politics has a way of infecting relationships, not for the better of the town.
As long as you alluded to the fact that you called that letter to my attention, which you did, you ought to also go on to say, or I will go on to say, what I told you, that I thought that letter was totally inappropriate, that I would never write a letter like that, that I don't condone that, and that I would condemn that. I have never thought for one second that you had any personal take in this thing or were being bribed or anything of the sort, and I reject publicly and privately, as I told you I would, any such suggestion. I do think to put a better spin on it, and I don't know what the spin is since I didn't say it, there is criticism, and it may be legitimate, of the fact that the whole transaction was not done as publicly as one could argue it should have been. That's a different issue than suggesting for a moment that you had some personal reason to do it the way you did it. That's fair criticism, in my judgment. Suggesting that you had some personal stake that you were going to get out of it is unfair, and there's no basis for it. And as long as we're relating conversations we had, you did point out to me, and I thank you for standing up for myself and my wife when we were unfairly accused, and I also went on to point out to you, since we're doing all this now, right, that you had done something very similar to me during the campaign by trying to tie me to Harvey Weinstein. That is the only time in our relationship when you have sunk low and done something that I thought was inappropriate. We are bringing, we are bringing Trump to Greenwich as we blame the press and as we sit here criticizing each other. So let's move on.
I agree. So it was a cathartic experience when I talked to you two weeks ago, and now it's been sort of a public one, but I-
Now, it's a public cathartic experience.
But I, but I think there's value into this, I really do. And my days are numbered, but I will, I feel much better that-
Probably mine are too.
That this was dealt with because it's, it's not going to stop with us. It'll continue to go on and on and on, and frankly, it's not the community I grew up in, and it's not the community I want to continue to live in, if that's going to be the case. So we have before us under old business, the Greenwich Housing Authority, who have come forward with two different requests for municipal improvement. The first one pertains to Armstrong Court and to construct a new building approximately 50, elderly 55 and older units, consisting of market rate units with up to 10 units being affordable in single, in a single building located to the rear property to be accessed from booth place. And the second one, which we haven't perhaps focused as much attention on, is Quarry Knoll, one, the Greenwich Housing Authority's request to improve with 70, 175 in 225 units, mixed elderly affordable market rate units. Over the course of two meetings, I believe we've had these before us, and we've been able to develop the conversation, first around the broader plan of what's intended, then around what's the economics of the units that are being built. And I think we left off at last meeting where, and you did provide, I want to acknowledge, considerable information outlining all of your inventory of housing, the history of it. But what we brought to the fore in talking to our town planner is that I, and I think what's happened, and I've talked to her about this, is there's two different paths you're following, and you're on one that's, I think, that is consistent with the current P O C D, which was clearly stipulating that the Housing Authority should look at its current properties to increase their housing stock. That was talked about pre-2009 when it was opted, but was put in the plan. The Housing Task Force that was developed by this board chaired by Nancy Brown had that as, as a recommendation. What's taking place today is a strategy by the Planning and Zoning Commission to see to it that we increase our affordable housing stock by definition of the state so that we can qualify for a moratorium from developers who may want to come in and build these very massive 830G statute-type developments. And they're clearly for profit. And I believe there's been conversations between Ms. DeLuca and her office in the Housing Authority, which I, I know from talking to her, seem to kind of put things back congruent with one another. So there's that, there's that part of it. In addition, we've received considerable information by a local resident, Ms. Fortunato, who has had an active interest in her neighborhood and the concerns about contaminants in and around her neighborhood, and has spoken specific to it. And so I did print it all out, I actually perused it. I also spoke to our Commissioner of Public Works, Amy Seibert. She had provided to Katie DeLuca back in 2015, and she also provided to me in 2014 comments on the project. In the areas that she looked at, addressed the soil testing, it also talked about Holly Hill and stormwater testing. These are memos that are public, certainly can be shared, but I do think it's important that it be put out there that she did say in this memo back then, March 6, "As the report did not find any incidences of Connecticut's remediation standard regulations, in addition, in addition, as the Housing Authority is not pursuing the building," because this is after it was tabled, "building parking on the parcel adjacent to Booth Court, there is no need to pursue the matter. Connecticut Deep has a large work goal, will not upend matters that show no need for remediation and where no project is being pursued. DPW sees no reason to question the results of the Mellett-Tully information. The work was done by professional engineers, and whether they are from New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, or some other state, they can take samples for soil characterization, compare them to relevant standards, and provide their analysis to their clients. The assertions that the samples must be taken by Connecticut licensed environmental professionals, LEP, are not correct." So I say that because that seems to be the overarching issue on that. I have some thoughts in terms of this going forward for this piece, but I do think it'd be helpful just to get any additional information on the second piece, because we haven't heard as much about Quarry or addressed questions on that piece.
Yes, we could start there. I mean, I guess to the extent we're making a record here, my name is Christopher Bristol, I'm attorney for the Housing Authority of the town of Greenwich, and as you mentioned, we're here for, to, at my request, municipal improvement request to further its mission and increase the town's affordable housing stock. I guess, starting up, starting off where you had mentioned for Quarry Knoll, in terms of the development, it's, it's, again, it's to basically redevelop the site, it's a seven-acre site, and to remove the, the sort of aged buildings that are there and replace them with 175 to 225 units in five different buildings. Again, that's the design that's currently proposed, with sufficient parking for all, and it will be a mixture of senior housing, of affordable units for smaller units, some family units, as well as quote-unquote "market rate town housing, townhouses that may be available." Again, it's just in terms of what market rate means, actually, I guess I just wanted to make that clear, that this isn't a sort of, it may be market rate, and that is not tied to a specific cat, per se, but it's not to maximize profit, really, any profits that are generated for stuff that is quote-unquote, or properties that are sold or rented at quote-unquote "market rate," or put back into the system. This is not a for-profit venture here, this is a nonprofit where everything is, is, is put back into the system. And I guess in terms of questions, it's easier for me to respond to questions. Everything, you know, that we'd be doing would be subject to planning zoning review and DPW as well.
I think, I think that's right. I know that one of the questions that came up was, and Mr. Johnson was kind enough to reply with, it was, you know, pro forma, what are the costs and so forth? I see that was, was provided. And again, it's just that, based upon what you know today, you know, having not gone out to bid and so forth, you don't know precisely. So I just want to make sure the record's clear about that. But you did, you were responsive to, in my mind, all the things that we raised at the last meeting and have, have done so.
And we did, and, and just to, to further state that, we also, we did have a meeting, had a very good meeting on Tuesday this week, with Kay DeLuca, Tony Johnson, myself as attorney as well. So we, we had a long, very productive discussion, and much of it had to do with sort of zoning nuts involved, about how we perceive going forward the two projects, but also perhaps more importantly for this board, was the affordable housing equivalency units and how the, how important it is to, toward the town's aim to reach that moratorium threshold to prevent 830G developments. When you look at the current number of units that we have, I think it's something like 75 is what Katie had said, or 75 or 80, which are sort of under that umbrella, and that's going by private development. Now, the Greenwich Housing Authority's units, they're probably about 1,000 units, depending on how you look at them, maybe up to 1,200 units that would be affordable, and all those are assigned points and count towards the, this 830G calculation. Now, based upon this meeting, we're, I know that Katie and Crystal, the affordable housing coordinator over in that office, was working with the state and trying to come up with how, what the ultimate number is based upon this additional data that we had provided them. And I'm not sure it's there yet, but again, given the fact that we have about 70-some units currently, and the fact that we have, the Greenwich Housing Authority manages about- units currently and the fact that we have, the Greenwich Housing Authority manages about, you know, between a thousand to twelve hundred, the number would jump substantially and one would think that we'd be at or above what that moratorium threshold would be. Again, I say that sort of just supposition at this point because we don't have anything back from the state as far as, as far as I know in terms of what that calculation is. But that alone, I think, is, is substantial and I think should be beneficial, just that data and inclusion alone. Now, these units that we'd be doing here, to the extent that we'd be increasing them, would only be adding and furthering that goal.
You told us that ten percent of the proposed fifty-one at Armstrong Court are to be senior housing, as I recall.
Well, it's all senior housing, but there'd be an affordable housing-
Affordable, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Well, affordable-
What, what percentage at Quarry Noel would be affordable?
Oh, most of them. I think, I think that only the, the, the townhouses wouldn't be. And if those, in terms of the current design, there's only a handful of those. So the vast majority of them would fall under that affordable umbrella. And I would say this, in terms of meeting that, I was thinking practically as opposed to, it's our understanding and our belief that based upon the current law, that all the units that the Greenwich Housing Authority constructs goes to that goal. So although we were talking about in that current instance, a handful that may not be quote unquote affordable, but market rate without air quotes as well, all of them, in our, in our view, count toward that moratorium goal.
Yeah, okay. But I was just asking which are really going to be affordable, and I gather your answer is most of them.
Yeah, 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 the vast majority of those would be.
And that point, in whole, so when you say, everything that you do-
Yeah.
--counts, which I did read, I read that elsewhere. But do they factor then in as a whole or based upon the income level, you get a percentage? So if it's between this range, you get point five, if it's between this-
And that's why I, I know that, I know that there's a point system, and I mean, even though I sat the meeting and I looked at this stuff myself, I don't want to speak out of school because it seems to be more, I don't want to say more than a science, but, but it seems to be a very specific mechanism of determination. And that's why Katie, DeLuca and staff were reaching out to the state in order to sort of understand what that ultimate formula and calculation would be. But again, given the fact that it would be, you know, many times more than the current affordable housing stock that we have, it seems like it would be very, very close to meeting that threshold.
She confirmed that. I mean, she did say that. She's, she's working for it. But what I want to compliment is I think now there's alignment between their objectives, their current objectives and, and what you're coming in for. I mean, again, we're looking at this, you know, conceptually and, you know, I think this board and previous boards have been supportive of all the good work that the Housing Authority is doing, knowing that this has been a longstanding issue. I mean, it, it, you could pick up any report or topical-
It's been years.
Years. And so we, we've made strides. Every group pushes it forward. I really think Katie deserves considerable credit, the fact that she's, she's monitoring all those moderate income dwelling units, the accessories, they've looked at, you know, regulation changes so that you're getting that from the private as well as the-
It's quite a task. It's not easy to, it's not easy to do to get your hands around that.
I think it's just telling the story to the public so they have an understanding.
Yeah, and it's, and it's not something that's intuitive, you know? I mean, it, it takes a fair amount of discussion and sort of thought, and it's, even to, to skilled people in the business and land use, you know, you know, circles, it, it takes a little bit to sort of understand the regulatory and practical framework that, that, that we're dealing with in those circumstances.
I was going to suggest, and do you have any, I'm sorry.
And again, we do have representatives, obviously, Sam Roman is here, Tony Johnson's here, if you have any questions that are more specific to them.
I have a question on Quarry Noles, and then I have another general observation. But the question on Quarry Noles, since we haven't talked about it and since you are obliterating the existing and, and expanding, I understand, what, what do the Quarry Noel residents say about this? How do they feel about the whole thing? And we haven't heard from them, so I, I just wonder what do they-
I mean, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Tony Johnson speak to that, but based upon my conversations with him, I mean, I think everyone is, it's nice to know that, that there would be progress. I mean, you know, obviously that there's, you know, it's, it's, it's not pretty upfront because it's, you have to shuffle people around and there's construction activities and so, so it's not a pretty process necessarily, but the outcome, I think, is, is much more beneficial for everybody, so.
Okay. I was just getting that they've been told about it and-
Oh, yes.
And they're, okay.
Oh, yes. No, these plans have been, and Tony will speak to, these plans have been around for a long time.
Great. Good. Very good. Well, no, if that's, if that's accurate, that's fine, as long as that's accurate. Well, no, the only, the comment I was going to make is I see, and I think you've alluded to it and Peter's alluded to it, that you have provided answers to questions which Katie had raised and which we had raised. But I also see that they came in yesterday, which was for me a religious holiday, so I haven't looked at them. I, it's also the day before we're meeting, I don't know what chance Peter and John got to look at them, but maybe they did. I have not.
Yes.
So I'm just noting, Peter, I'm not prepared to deal with this.
No, that's fine. I was going to suggest in regard to not just that, but, you know, I did share with you the memorandums that, I mentioned them, that Ms. Seibert did. She also took the material that Ms. Fortunato had a chance to peruse it, but she had done work on that concern before. And one of the suggestions that she made to me is that to give the confidence to this board that this issue, there is no issue for you on, that she could have by the next meeting, someone independent, independent environmental, look at it and advise the board, not, not you, us. She said she could do that.
But this has been taken, I mean, I, it's, I, I, I understand and appreciate, it's just like what, what you're saying. This, this, this matter's been resolved, there, there, I feel like we're rehashing the same issues from two thousand and fourteen or before. There's public record, or there's information in the public record that where D P W has signed off and said that there's no concern.
Well, she's saying that here, but she's-
And we're saying it here. I feel like there's, I feel like we're, we're, you know, we're just keeping, recycling the same information in different files in town to have people look at it. It's, it's unnecessary and it's unfair, it's inefficient. I mean, it's, we, we've already addressed this multiple times already. So I, I don't know what board can be on.
I don't, I don't disagree. It sort of goes back, you know, to giving another set of people to confirm what we already know, since, I mean, in all candor, you've, you've had aspersions cast on you. And, and again, I'm going to go back to my earlier comment, I don't think some of it has been entirely fair and justified because I don't think there's been enough forensic looking at the documents. That being said, it's here now, we have it. I would prefer, frankly, to not only help me, because I've, I don't have the issue, but to help you by, by taking her on, up on a recommendation, because I said, if you could have people look at that, she could get it back to us.
How many bites of the apple can you get? I mean, it's, I guess that's, that's where I feel like, you know, it tends to be, whereas I, again, I, I appreciate your situation, but at the same time, you know, it gets very frustrating to have the same, have to, to, to fight the same battle over and over again. It feels like that movie Groundhog Day, you know, where, where you come up, you know, and it's just, you're dealing with the same issue and over and over again. And we've, we've, we've met the burden. We've met the burden already.
I thought we were talking about Quarry Noel. We were back.
We moved back.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, to be clear, that-
I think we've, we, we kind of looked at Quarry Noel, we understand there does not appear to be any, you know, questions about it. I mean, but there's clearly been a strong neighborhood presence about it. And to be candid with you, the issues related to traffic, to runoff, all those things are part of the land use approval process, which this board is not charged to do. Our job is to look at in totality of the town, the needs, and we expect our professionals to do that. And I have confidence in Amy Seibert.
And we, and we have to go through the process just like, just like anyone else. We have to be scrutinized by every town department.
But this issue of environmental has been such a cause rightly or wrongly because of the way it's been either in my view sensationalized or misrepresented. I just think it's another way to sort of give conclusion to the concern by having, she's offered, said, look, I'll have someone look at it and-
Something else. Sandy has just said he hasn't had time to look at what you have.
Yeah, and I support that too.
Yeah, well, we just received it, yeah. And I just literally saw it this morning when I came in.
So I think those, those two, I think the first one is the time, but the second one, if she's offering to do that, I'm just saying-
Well, as long as you got the time, you might as well.
Right.
Yeah, hey, good morning.
So I think you're, don't overreact to our view. I think-
I'm not going to overreact.
I, I am supportive of what you're doing, I'll be very clear, because you've made significant progress. In my mind, I, I'm a student of Greenwich government. I mean, I can remember the eighties and reading stories. After those units, McKinney Terrace, there was a gap, nothing happened. The Housing Task Force, the, what was it, Housing Two Thousand?
Yeah.
Back in the nineties. You're doing what you were directed to do, as my, my thoughts are with the P O C two thousand nine. So that, that part I have no issue with. I'm just saying, we're trying to be responsive to issues raised and provide the professional resource to address it.
Yeah.
In a timely, timely way.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just want to point out to you though, that the individuals who challenged the site on an environmental basis, it's called the E P A, E P A came out. Senator Blumenthal went down there, stood in front of the pride on television, you know what I'm saying, we're going to get to the bottom of this. We tested it twice and submitted that information previously to the town with a very professional organization. The opponents challenged the credentials of a professional organization. Planning zoning required that we test it again. We went out and tested it again, right? With the same results. And so we've had everyone opine on this and we've spent a lot of money doing it. I mean, now you're willing to spend money to do it.
No, I don't, I don't think what's, here's what, here, I just want to be clear for the record with Ken and, Leslie, sorry. Sorry, what she's saying is she's not going to go have them do more testing in two weeks. She wants to look at the reports. She's looked at them, but, you know, people question her. She has people she's working with on other areas, they can look at the reports and give us, were these valid reports? Because that's really the question I took, is were they valid reports? I think they are, but-
Well, they are absolutely valid reports. We borrowed, borrowed money on the back of these reports. No one lends you money in an environmentally toxic area.
Understood.
Doesn't happen, right? And so I, I think the question is, is that are we going to move folks who are saying that this is an issue? I don't think so. I think they think it is and that's what they're hanging their hat on and they continue to hang their hat on it, even in light of evidence. I mean, this is one of those things where science doesn't matter, right, at this point? Doesn't matter what the science is. And so it's unfair to the Housing Authority in terms of the amount of money, the amount of time that we've put into this same question over and over and over and over again, to appease a group that there's no science or evidence to the contrary. And if there was, we would be willing to address it upfront. And that's why we spent all this money. As a matter of fact, every time we even working on Armstrong Court one and two, we actually have to get an update to all of our environmental reports just because it's required. So there is no environmental report that can go past six months that we don't update.
Again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make your, like, I'm just trying to kind of help resolve any outstanding issue for whom, for me it's not, but for other people it is, and some people are new to the discussion. So to say that, you know, a fresh set of-
So what I was just going to say, Tony, Tony, as long, as long as, if, we are not going to act because we, at least I, haven't had an opportunity to look at what you submitted yesterday, as long as that's the case, why isn't it in your interest during the same time to get whatever it is that Ms. Seibert is suggesting she would do? I, I don't get it. It's in your interest, it's going to be put off anyway. What difference does it make?
Yeah, yeah, she's already done it. I mean, the thing is, yes, you can do what you want to do. We're here, you know, to provide affordable housing, right? And we're saying that we've been patient, we spent a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort to refute the same argument over and over and over and over, over again.
I got it.
So I think what we're saying is the same thing, that we think, you know, we've, we've endured this pressure for years now. And so, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Then let's vote on Quarry Noel one, so we get that one off the table.
No, no, I want-
Hold on, Sam. Let, let me finish. And, you know, I can't control what you do. I think that's, if that's the process, if that's what you're telling me the process is, you guys will put it off and you will review the financial information and get back to us on the next one? So be it. I mean, it is what it is, but I'd like to move something forward today.
And I think, I think, I think you can be confident and nobody is saying, you know, they're not supportive of the direction you're moving. I haven't heard anybody say that. What I did hear was, one, a time with the information, which has nothing to do with the secondary issue, which I raised only because we received this voluminous email of documents, some of them more relevant than others, and I took to the resource I have, which was the Commissioner of Public Works, whom affirmed what you said. I mean, she said we looked at that already. But again, knowing that she's been dealing with the same issue elsewhere, same, you're not the only people being, I want to say, picked upon, this is happening forever. She's saying, I'm happy to have our folks look at it and tell you that that's valid. That's all, that's all she said. I don't want to make it any more than what it is, and I want to be clear, it doesn't involve the town doing any more tests and so forth. The P and Z will take up the details of the project, the, the site development, the runoff. I mean, some of the things in the report, Ms. Fortunato had to do with Holly Hill, which is a whole separate issue unrelated to them in Ms. Seibert's eyes. Like I said, best thing you can do is become a constituency for Holly Hill in the budget process and get the B E T and the R T M to fund the long-term plan that's been out there that always get short shrift because civic centers, ice rings and sidewalks get more vocal. And so people don't hear anyone saying, well, I want the dump to be redesigned so that it can be more efficient in environmentally sound, whatever. So I think that, to me, would be a great cause.
So again, can I offer my suggestion again?
Sure.
If we are able to at least move one of these things forward? So, because you've had no questions, you've had no opposition. So I don't see any reason to continue to hold that over.
Well, unless I'm missing something, and you obviously can correct me, the information you produced relates to the totality of what you wanted to do, including Quarry Noles, no?
No, there are two separate M Is that you're going to-
So we have nothing on Quarry Noles at this point, is what you're saying? We had not asked for anything and we had not gotten anything?
Yes, for both.
Pardon? Yeah, that's what I thought. And that's what I haven't studied, and that's why I don't want to hold on it.
Yeah, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, so we were just pointing out the fact you sent information on both projects.
Yes.
But Mr. Litback has not had a chance to fully digest it. And Mr., Mr. Toner hasn't. I mean, I, I went through it, but I mean, I don't think, I don't think whatever is ten days is going to hurt you.
Well, I think every delay hurts because of the fact that what we do is we're, we're dancing to someone else's tune, you know, the tail's wagging the dog. And, you know, respectfully, it is.
Well, I, I don't want to be critical of you, but I am going to be critical. You stand there and talk about that. We asked you for this two weeks ago. You gave it to us yesterday on a religious holiday. You knew I couldn't possibly look at it. So when you say time is of the essence-
That's right.
-I suggest to you that you could have gotten it to us before Wednesday, October ninth.
As I told you before, I couldn't give you something I did not have. You think, you thought I had it, I didn't have it, I had to produce it. So I did produce it and I gave it to you. And it wasn't that I needed to hide it from you. I have no reason to hide anything.
But it took until yesterday.
It did. And I gave it to my attorney and he had a couple of days to deal with it.
Well, then it takes us time to read it, doesn't it?
And I don't have a problem with that. But I, I think the question goes back to the point. We're not trying to hide anything.
I'm not suggesting you are.
Well, I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
Well, I'm suggesting that I need time to look at what you gave us at the last minute. That's exactly what I'm suggesting.
All right. So you tell me what you want to do.
I think it's pretty simple and straightforward. We appreciate what you gave us. It's, we appreciate what you gave us. It's frankly, from perusing it, it's what we asked for, so we're again thankful to you. You were very responsive. I think the only issue right now is time for people to review it and digest it. And then two, since this other issue was thrown out, which may even be a non-issue, I want to satisfy myself by hearing from the person again, even though she said it in writing back in two thousand and fifteen, that there's no issue there, to satisfy the fact that there are new people in this conversation who may not have known that. So I, those are the two things. And I think October twenty-sixth is our next meeting, gives us all ample time to do what we need to do. And I don't, I don't think you should feel badly about it or, nobody's out to get you. We're try, we're trying to help you achieve a goal that's a goal for the town. And I know you've been working hard at it and I want to compliment you for that. You've done a lot to move this forward. You're transforming Armstrong Court. I think it's gonna be amazing what it's gonna do for that neighborhood once it's all done with the buildings that are there. So...
Okay.
Leave on a high note that we're moving forward. Don't leave on a sour note that we're being punitive, because I don't think we are.
No.
I, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but I don't think we're...
No, I think you're speaking for all of us. You're certainly speaking for me.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yes, I agree.
That, I mean, so the twenty-sixth, and it stays on the agenda, just again for public edification, because it's got, the item stays on the agenda until it's disposed of. So, the public notification, to be clear, has been out there since the first meeting, and it will stay on there.
Uh, just one last question, so I can clarify. The question that you're looking to resolve are the issues or something that was brought up? What, what is it exactly? So, we're, we're leaving here with the understanding...
Did you, here, you can have all this.
I never receive...
Okay, take all this. This is what Ms. Fortunato sent to us. She sent it, there were a lot of people on the email. The only issue that keeps coming up is the issue of the testing. And I don't want to delve into it because I have my own opinions about. I mean, to me, your site and Holly Hill are two separate sites. There's, they're, they're separated by a brook. The town owns the brook, you don't. In these memos going back, there are many things that the Commissioner has said can be done to improve the overall area, not specific to you, but with Holly Hill. Those are things that we can't expect you to do. They're not on your property. But the things that were brought up, I think she can easily have addressed, for lack of a better word, by saying, "Yeah, we, we had such and such firm look at it. These are sound results." I believe they're sound results, but I'd rather have that affirmed with a stamp again. They're sound results.
As long as you're turning on a slightly different question. We've had the Armstrong people here voicing their concerns about the Armstrong Court project. We haven't had anyone from Quarry Knowles, and I asked, and, and you heard the answer, I just want to make sure it's accurate, that the Quarry Knoll residents are all fine with this. I mean, that, that, that this is not an issue as for them, correct?
Yes, as, as Chris said, that we've brought this plan up, and part of our requirements are to discuss our plans with our residents. And we have. And if, you know, anyone who, if you go down there and visit the site, which you probably have, you probably have never been inside of the units, though. And the same thing at Armstrong Court, is that, and I know you've been there as well.
And I've been inside there.
Yeah.
I don't think I have been at Quarry Knowles, but I'm not sure. I've been to the site, but I know.
On site, but not inside, exactly.
I don't recall.
So, people are excited, just like the folks who live at Armstrong Court are excited. They're excited about the fact that we're doing something to the units that haven't been done in twenty, thirty, forty years. So, they're excited to get new apartments. And, and as far as the families at, and individuals at Quarry No., we can't move those people until we actually build another building. Because there's no place in town to actually move fifty families or fifty individuals unless we do it, which is what our plan is, which is what we've discussed with you in the past, is that it's very important that we get started on that other senior building, so that we can have it available for them to be able to relocate to.
I, I just wanted to make sure that they were aware and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
And again, this board unanimously approved your MI for McKinney Terrace.
Yes, it did.
So, you're on your way with that, and that's part of your multi-phase plan.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, I, I can't remember the last time a question was put about an MI, more information to any applicant who came before this board. I've been a member of the, you know, political process here in town for over forty years. I was a past chairman of the Land use Committee of the RTM for fifteen years. And I've attended hundreds and hundreds of Board of Selectment meetings. Had to quote our former First Electman, John Margana. He had said to me at one of the meetings, point blank, "Mr. Romeo, the job here today is not to approve the application of a development, but to move it on to the next area of expertise, which is the other town bodies. Wetlands, Public Works, Planning and Zoning, Board of Appeals if necessary. That's the function of the other experts, not the Board of Selectmen." Over the last five years, the Housing Authority has reinvested, borrowed over twenty-six million dollars in new construction and renovations of our properties. We've done testing on, on Armstrong Court three times. The third time we did it, we even let Planning, Zoning pick the tester because we were accused of cover-up. As you said earlier, you took personal offense to someone questioning your integrity. Well, at that point, my integrity was questioned also because we were considered lying and skewing the results of the first two tests. I'm a volunteer. I don't get paid for what I do. Put in hundreds of hours to make a better life for the residents of Armstrong Court. Most of them even have my personal cell phone number if there's a problem. So, all I see happening here now today is another red herring of a bunch of disgruntled people who believe something is, is there that's not there. We will not be able to move forward with a permit for construction unless we provide new testing, which we're gonna have to do anyway, to Public Works. A property's gonna be tested before we put another shovel in the ground at Armstrong Court or at Quarry No., anyplace. And as Tony indicated, every six months, those tests have to be reevaluated and upgraded. So, as far as contamination or any of the other red herring they want to throw at us, we have to deal with it. And I think it's, you know, we have to go through a lot of hoops to provide a better quality of life for the residents of the Town of Greenwich and, and to provide more affordable housing and a mixed use. We look at a whole demographics of the Town of Greenwich, not just one segment of the town. We have a lot of young people that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars educating that can't afford to stay here once they're through with their education. Why? There's no place for them to go that's affordable. And when we talk about market rate housing, our market rate housing is below what the actual market rate housing is. So, we look at a whole bunch of demographics. The elderly, the low and moderate income, the young people. And we're trying to address the whole area, all demographics. And I think we've done a pretty good job over the last seven years I've been on the board. And I think we've worked very, very hard in trying to fulfill our mission. But when we see red herrings, and I see red herrings just being thrown out, another delay tactic, try to get, get a victory, get your name in headlines, I think it's still plausible. I just want to leave it at that.
Thank you.
Can I make, ask you a question, Sam? Because you've raised a point that I've been thinking about all week, market rate. If you look at Quarry No., how does the market rate for Quarry No. compare to its neighbor, East Elm Street or Millbank Avenue?
Quarry No. is about one-third of what the rest of them are.
Yeah.
You know, actually, in terms of the rent, Quarry No. is, average rent there is less than five hundred dollars, around four hundred and fifty dollars a month for the entire site, which is two different prices.
And on East Elm Street, you didn't get a...
About four thousand, five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. The date is the twenty-fourth for the next meeting. Thank you for pointing that out. The next meeting is the twenty-fourth. So, are there any questions on this? Because we do have people, just so you're aware, we have people scheduled at ten-thirty, ten-forty-five, and eleven for interviews to Town Board. So, Ms. Fortunato, do you have a comment or a question?
Quick question. I'd like to just note something, okay? Hamilton Avenue has contaminants. Western Middle School, I proved, have contaminants. We know Holly Hill has them. My yard has them. I'm thirty feet from the dump. It's just simple logic. They are a fourteen-point-eight-eight acre property that was permitted to do ten soil samples. Six of those were composite samples where you take all of the six samples that they took, you throw them into a bowl, and you scoop out whatever. That does not tell you where the hot spots are. One came up elevated for lead. The other one was ten points away being elevated for lead. And there's nowhere to, no way of telling where those soil samples came from. If you look at Hamilton Avenue School, it's the smallest green space that we have in Chickahominy for kids to play on. That came up.
And there was a reason for that. There was a reason for that, though.
Okay, they did over forty to fifty samples, and that, that was, that's less than an acre. So, we have a monster, almost fifteen acres, and only ten little soil samples. I mean, come on. We didn't do that at Western. We didn't do that at Greenwich High School. This is where people have to live. I've watched my family die in, in front of me, my neighbors. You're right, it's not your fault.
Excuse me, first off, this has gone off the track of what it is. And they're, they're...
Well, I'm accused of being a red herring.
They're different properties, so, they're different properties. Western, we know the field had issues, but the, the field was filled in. As far as I know, there's nothing in Armstrong Court that was filled, it's in its natural state.
Why don't you let us take the samples, and we'll get somebody out and take samples of Holly Hill and Armstrong.
I don't know necessarily if you're licensed or you're equipped to do that.
No, we'll get somebody licensed, because I think that's what needs to be what's done here.
You, you...
Can we go back to something that Mr. Sam said before? What is the purpose of their being here today? What is an MI? That's something that I asked the, the legal department for after the last meeting, because I was confused. And I still haven't gotten a...
It, it's a referral to Planning and Zoning for any modification, disposition, change to a Town of Greenwich property or a property of the Greenwich Housing Authority, so that entities can't go off and do things without the elected board, Executive Board of the Town, knowing what that is. It's not, like was said, to get into the access and egress. That's what we have Planning and Zoning for. So, we, we've heard the concept. I think what we're trying to do is, since, call it what it you will, issues were brought up, we're trying to make sure that they are fully adjudicated so that the concept can move forward without those issues. I just, I don't want to belabor the issue with Ms. Fortunato anymore, but I, I share many of your same interests about the neighborhood having come there, but I also vehemently disagree with some of the things you said. And I, and I think to say that there's cancer clusters. The one relative that I had who died in his fifties, who lived adjacent to you, was in Vietnam and was exposed to Agent Orange. So, that statistic in my mind, great guy, carpenter, may rest in peace. But I have other relatives who live right there, and they lived well into their nineties. So, we don't know what goes on on individual people's properties. I don't know if people are pouring chemicals on their lawns or taking automotive fuels or materials and dumping them on their lawn. We don't know that, but we could. I suppose we could test every... Okay.
I have two ways to do that. I will supply more.
But info about what? I guess info about what? I'm not, I'm not asking you because you're not a licensed...
No, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna have somebody come up and do it.
To your property?
No, I already know what's on my property.
What's on your property?
There's a lead.
But how do we know it's not from, how do we know it's not from changing brakes on your property?
I'm thirty feet from it.
How can we, how do, how do we know it's not from changing automotive things on your property, which people have reported's done there?
Because why would it be in my front yard? It would be near the garage, right?
Peter.
It's been fly, fly through this community for over thirty-eight years.
I thought we had come to an agreement that we were going to let
Amy.
Amy get an expert to look at everything that has been put before us
Exactly.
and make a definitive statement as to whether or not
Exactly.
Armstrong Court is suitable for what they want to do there. And then, keep in mind what our job is here, an MI, not to get into the messy details that other people in town government directs.
If we can put the environmental testing to rest at the moment, Amy's gonna be reviewing the documents that she has and come to her conclusion.
She can advise our board.
We are going to test anyway before we proceed with any development. So, it's gonna be tested again. So, what is the reason for this discussion that we're having right now? We are not the dump. We are not Holly Hill. Our property did not contaminate the neighbors' properties. There was no manufacturing going on at our site. So, I don't want to be lumped in with Holly Hill.
Right.
I want to be lumped in with the neighbors next door. Our property is our property. We'll deal with it. We don't do any mechanical work. We don't have to run the business out of, out of Holly Hill. I mean, out of Armstrong Court. If someone's running businesses, then maybe we should test all of those areas.
I will just say this, though, to only one point. We did put another entity through hoops for an MI. That was the Lebanon School Building Committee. So, we did, we did give someone a challenge. But anyway, I think we need to be respectful of the people who are here to be interviewed. Did you have something?
This is my first time on the Board of Selectment. Can I comment on Quarry No. One real quickly, on behalf of the Millbrook...
Oh, sure, yeah. I mean, since you came here.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm kind of a little nervous after hearing some, the back and forth. My name is Chris Legano. I live in the Millbrook community. And on behalf of the Millbrook Homeowners Association, we just had a few questions or concerns about the Quarry No. redevelopment, as that overlooks, or will overlook, Millbrook and, and Overlook Drive. So, we're just trying to get a sense of the scope of the project, because portions, I think, of Quarry No. One, which I think are the small cottages, back right up to some of the properties on Overlook Drive. And I, you know, you can see that the cottages and the fencing bordering there. And I guess Quarry No. One is a fifty-unit development. We're talking about going up to possibly two-hundred-and-twenty-five units. So, some of our questions are how, where, what, what size? What will be overlooking Millbrook? Because we've got, I think, Millbank, Millbank Ridge up there overlooking us, portions of Quarry No. already. Wilberbeck Court is over on Overlook Drive. So, there are some concerns on behalf of the Millbrook residents, exactly what the scope, you know, the scope of this project, and what will be towering or looking over Millbrook. What kind of screening will be there, if anything? So, I don't know if all these comments are appropriate now or for later on down the road, but I was asked to try to come and just get a more of a sense of, of what it is.
Sure, yeah. Tony, can you?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like you to come by and talk to me, and I'll give you the whole plan.
Appreciate that.
And we had actually worked with the Millbrook Association years ago when we first presented the plan. By the way, Dr. Stanzel, who was the president of the association, who had endorsed the plan actually back then. So, I'm be happy to go through it with you. Basically, it's a combination of senior and family housing. The bigger buildings were in the middle, because there is a quarry, we're actually below most of the property. So, the rear of the property actually has smaller buildings in the rear of the property. More like two-story units type thing. So, but come by anytime you want, and I'll explain it all to you and show you what the, what the plan is currently.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you. At this time, we've entertained a motion to go into executive session for purposes of interviewing candidates for Town Boards and Commissions. We have four individuals, one for the Board of Parks and Rec Foundation, and three for the Board of Parks and Recreation. The first person we'll be seeing is Ms. Bruno, and thank you very much for taking your, you know, thanks to all of you for being patient.
May I have a motion, please, for the executive session?
Is it Sue Botson, or Botson? Is that who it is?
This is Linda. Linda is...
Oh, Linda Bruno, sorry.
This is the physician that pertains to the foundation, which, to save our stray spokes, had given...
We interviewed four people in executive session. One for the appointment to the Board of Parks and Rec Foundation, three for the Board of Parks and Recreation, which are nomination. We have one more to see on October twenty-fourth, so I don't believe we can act on the Board of Parks and Recreation. I do think we could act on the... I do think we could act on the Parks and Rec Foundation, which stipulates that the Board of Selectmen can nominate, I believe, six directs, six directors for a total of 13. We did meet with Linda Bruno, who is with Save Our Strays Advisory Board. We mentioned in executive session that part of the funds with the Greenwich Parks Foundation are from the Save Our Strays fundraising, when they established the animal shelter on North Street, and her representation on this foundation will assure that those funds and their application are maintained for animal welfare. So I would be inclined to nominate, or appoint, I should say, move to appoint Linda Bruno to that.
I would second that.
Okay, with that objection. Again, the others are not, we're not done with the interview process. We'll have one more on the 24th. And I believe we have several property tax appeal settlements that the Assistant Town Attorney, Jean McLaughlin, brought to us today, and for purposes of settlement, Ms. Hines, would you be inclined to read those for us?
Certainly. The first one is Pickwick Properties LLC versus the Town of Greenwich. It's docket number HHB CV-16-6034599, parcel number 01-2383. And this is for a tax credit of approximately $344,952 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed a trial, they could have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $1,542,487 plus interest and costs.
Okay, just to point out that this is for an appeal on the 2015 grant list, 2016 grant list, 2017 grant list, and 2018 grant list, as well as the 2019 grant list. So it's all encompassing of outstanding appeals on that particular property. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, with that objection.
Okay, the next case is Stone Point Capital LLC versus the Town of Greenwich. It's docket number HHB CV-16-6036227S, parcel number 02-1563S, and this is for a tax credit of approximately $49,517 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $184,080 plus interest and costs.
Okay, and this is for the grant list from 2015 through 18.
Move to approve.
Okay, with that objection.
Next is Pearson versus the Town of Greenwich. Docket number HHB CV-16-6036228S, parcel number 07-2794S. This is for a tax credit of approximately $31,529 against future tax payments. If the plaintiff were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $66,633 plus interest and costs.
So move. Second.
Okay, with that objection, and again, it was for the 15 through 18 grant list.
Lastly, 158 Roundhill Road LLC versus the Town of Greenwich. Docket number HHB CV-16-6034600S, parcel number 103194, and this is for a tax credit of approximately $11,178 against future tax payments. If the plaintiffs were to have prevailed the trial, they would have been entitled to a cash refund of approximately $39,025 plus interest and costs.
So move.
Okay, with that objection, that concludes the business before the board today. The next regular meeting is on Thursday, October 24th, at 10:00 a.m.
And it will be in the Cone Room.
In the Cone Room. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
With that objection.